Welcome to the flag of the United States of America. And we are a solid approach to stance, one nation under God, in the discipline of liberty and justice.
All right.
We'll move on to item number two, citizens comments. An opportunity for folks to address council for up to three minutes. Typically reserve a time for issues and items that are not on. Okay, moving on. Our first item is item A.
Back close.
Sorry, I can't hear you, Luke.
Jill, I was saying, citizens comments for items not on the agenda.
Okay.
Um, okay, moving on. Item A, sketch plan review for Warwick property. I believe Ms. Goodroad will tease this up for us.
Thank you, mayors members of the council. Staff received a sketch plan application from North Companies. We've got Jeff Cook here along with his consultant Josh McKenney. For the 25 acre property formerly part of the Warwick estate, which is south of Kenwood Trail and east of Iplava. The property is currently under contract and as a sketch plan, we are just seeking some preliminary information and feedback. We share it with the planning commission. Most of the time, sketch plans are only reviewed by staff, but we share it with the planning commission and then back in front of you. So this is not considered a formal application. They haven't submitted a preliminary flat or any type of actual formal application yet. The site is currently split guided and zoned, meaning the 25 acres has two land use classifications with two corresponding and similar zoning classifications. One of those on the west portion is OP or Office Park. In Office Park, the only other location for Office Park is adjacent to the industrial park. And OP zoning has been changed over time and is now very similar to the I1 or like industrial zoning designation. As such, it allows manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, those types of uses up to six stories. So that's currently what half the zoning district currently allows. The other half of that property is a little over half is C3 general commercial allowing for just that a wide range of commercial uses. Due to site constraints, and we've talked about this back in February, with limited visibility with the railcars, restricted access points into the site, lack of good traffic circulation in future resulting in what we feel the future development of an entirely commercial site we can challenge. So if you recall, the applicant, and he'll share that plan, submitted an initial concept plan to the council. That was for all residential. It included a multifamily building as well as townhomes, up to 365 units total, with a much higher density than what's being proposed today. The applicant has revised that plan after hearing really what the council was looking towards and the direction at that time was preserving as much commercial as feasible, understanding there are site constraints. And then also looking for retail uses that would support Ammler's Park. So they have responded and allow Jeff to do a deeper dive into the plan. But they did revise it meeting those requests. And then they had trimmed down the multifamily to market retail homes, the much less dense type of development. The planning commission did have a conversation at their work session last week. They were just going to share kind of a summary of their comments. They agree the OP or Office Park zoning is not a correct land use and zoning for it, understanding all the different uses that would be allowed. Acknowledge that development of all non-residential, so either all commercial or the combination as it is today, is really not feasible due to the access site constraints. They like the entertainment and retail additions that this plan offers. They agree it needs additional traffic and parking analysis. And they did like the medium density type of proposed housing as it brings another type of housing option to our housing stock. So I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. Hopefully the mouse works over there and he has a presentation for it.
So again, for those who entered, my name is Jeff Cook. I'm one of the North Companies. We're company based in Quint City here. Been in real estate development for right around 15 years. And excited to kind of talk through this with you. So again, what we have today is just kind of a site concept approval. So this is the site that we're talking about, the Warwick site. It's 25 acres currently used as agricultural, so it's tax assessed as such. So it's impacted the city of $1,700 in taxes. Future land use, as Tina mentioned, 9.94 acres is owned for commercial and 15.96 is owned for Office Park. So our proposal actually gives you slightly more commercial. And instead of the Office Park use, which planning commission agreed was not the highest and best use, we're proposing 15.67 acres of medium density residential. As Tina mentioned, this is the first site plan that many of you at work here in February saw. It was a more dense product, so we had a four story multifamily building right here that was approximately 200 units. There was 165 townhomes. And then there's daycare slash strip retail type use in the north west corner here. So preliminary feedback we got was most of you were opposed to the high density residential, the apartment building because of the hype. Four stories right next to Ammler's Park and some of the single family residential. We did hear a lot of your feedback, the public's feedback specifically being more experiential retail. One of you actually mentioned a pickleball court, concept brewery, ancillary uses that are supportive of the Ammler's Park. And so we took that to part and basically eliminated entire apartment building. So it's a lot less dense in terms of residential component. So we took it from 365 units down to 165 townhome units with the centralized clubhouse here. So obviously not a ton of change to the medium density residential. The main change, as Tina mentioned, was this kind of mixed use entertainment, experiential retail piece that we're talking about here. So the site in general is over parked. Across all these different work sessions, we've heard traffic is a concern specifically with Ammler's Park. And that is, you know, attributed to the success of the park, that the public really loves it. You know, I think one thing to keep in mind is that that traffic is usually three months to four months out of the year. So a quarter of the year, there's traffic concerns. The other three quarters of the year, it's not, not a sudden draft. So this is, this is kind of again, the current land use showing kind of what was proposed in the 2040 Plan that the city like located. And what we're proposing in terms of commercial location and medium density. So the one thing to note here is that we slipped this red component up to the the north side because it's a much better traffic flow. There's a traffic signal here as well from that perspective. So this just kind of shows you why we change it. It just kind of shows that the ease of access to the site down here, you see, there's a lot more turns. And, you know, not a signified intersection right here. This is the commercial component. So this is what we mainly revised with our last plan. So building A is kind of that experiential retail kind of pickleball type use. Building B is more kind of strip retail along with a restaurant user. We do have an active restaurant user and a user for building A that we've been talking to at length. But obviously we don't have anything under contract with them. The other thing to note is that there's a centralized plaza here, kind of a green space, turf space. The other pieces that, you know, potentially put some sort of a stage on here for live music. Maybe kind of have the public engage and enjoy this open space here. Here's some of the designs, kind of goes with the Scandinavian architecture that is prevalent in my designs. But also kind of mimics the Ammler's Park design and concept, the use of some of the whites and blacks and natural goods. Here's just some visiting images that we pulled from various locations. Just kind of showing how that could look or the public could interact with it as a nice benefit. Again, grabbing that experiential retail kind of piece. Here's some of the, the concept images. This is the project that, that is completed up in Maple Grove, Minnesota. So this community is 208 townhomes. This kind of shows how it's laid out. We have a lot of nice finishes. It's not, you know, building grade, it's nicer quality materials. A nice pool, pickleball court, playground, turf. So a lot of amenities, there's a gym, there's a golf simulator. You know, really as Tina mentioned, we're seeing this kind of use as a, as a diversifier to your housing stock. So city of Lakeville had a housing study done in 2023. And one of the prevalent issues are one of the highlights that they suggested Maxfield suggested was the build rent concept being a nice diversifier for the community, providing up different housing option that isn't currently available to the residents of Lakeville, being a rental product that, you know, the cost of full ownership right now is actually a lot more than what it is to rent. And we're seeing a pretty stiff rental of 500 to $1,000 per month as a benefit to Lakeville residents to have a different type of, but you're not sure. Here's some of the interior finishes of what the product looked like in terms of the townhomes. So nice interior finishes that you can see in kind of a scenario. So yeah, just a quick snapshot, as Tina mentioned, and I mentioned a little bit earlier, traffic has been a concern from planning mission as well as a lot of the residents, understandably. We did initially reach out to TC2, who's a traffic consultant. They haven't obviously done a full traffic study. That would be something we do as part of the full application. They did run a couple scenarios and looking at current state, what Office Park and commercial daily trips generated would be. And it's anywhere from 11 to 31% more traffic if we just developed the product as you see in the 2040 Plan versus our residential component, it wouldn't drive less traffic. And so obviously you guys would see a lot more detail to that. But from a high level, we've asked our consultants and that's what they're telling us is that with your product, it's anywhere from 11 to 31% less traffic per day than, you know, if we just developed it as the city of Lakeville.
So that's under the current zoning, it might be, or not be changed.
With that, yeah, I don't know if we open up for public comments.
No, they're, they're, they're all right.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. Sure. So here are you doing? Yeah, okay. Thank you for, for that. A couple of things I want to note just about traffic, I think. Just for reference, if you look at Ipana and 202nd already, it's a disaster. As is 202nd and that little fronted road by a speedway. So I, and that's not seasonal, it's morning and afternoon for school traffic and coming home. I wouldn't say that it's, that's year round. So just as an aside, so this area already has a lot of traffic pressures, which is why we had a lot of conversations with the county about how we, we'd work on, on County Route 50. You know, my perspective, I think, you know, rethinking the commercial makes a lot of sense. I don't, I know we don't really want to get into specifics today. I don't think it's got enough parking stalls. If you think about, if you're really going to make it a destination place, the amount of overflow parking anniversals is already having to deal with it in the neighborhood in Lakeville Elementary. And if it's anything like music venue that Casperson draws, there's just too many. It's just, it's just never going to work. Then the other thing I just want to share is my opinion on the amount of units here has not changed since we emailed back in July. So this is, I mean, to me, this part of the city can't support 165 units. So that's, that's my opinion of it. What other people can say?
Can you ask a question first? Can you explain what's the exception parcel? Is that, that, that's not under contract?
Correct, correct. Yeah, so good clarification. So Tim Milan owns this parcel. I have spoken with him. His daughter, Trini, lives in this house. She's looking for purchasing, house purchasing option. So he's, we've discussed, he's open to selling, but his daughter's not really.
Yeah, John.
So I like the mix, but I have to agree with the traffic stuff. And the other thing is, is that I just get a real sense that that commercial area, I think that's good use. I think it's appropriate, especially in the mix. But I just have a sense that that's going to turn into an overflow parking ground. So I think that really needs to be thought about in terms of size and parking. And no, I don't think anybody's going to treat that as just its own thing. I mean, we go into Ammler's and go in there and you can see some vice versa. I support housing on this. I, you know, with my mind, the problem is this is a difficult area because of the railroad tracks, because you have really two points of access that are really hard. But then I think 160 some units is high. I didn't kind of envision housing along 202nd and housing along 50. And then, you know, you have a clubhouse there and stuff, but maybe more green space, maybe more parking. So I, I've always said, I think the housing, have housing there along 202nd, 50. The middle is, is, well, there's a lot, but I just, the other piece is I'd really be interested in seeing the traffic study because Ipana is, and 202nd are, they're at a burden now. So I, I like the concept, I like the design, I like, especially with the, the community area. I just really get the, on the traffic piece. And I just think there's a reality that a lot of, I think, commercial area could end up being for others.
Sure. Boj?
I want to argue with what's previously been said. I think we're in the right direction looking at this retail piece here. But, you know, like it feels like it's still too dense. Maybe what I was looking at, the elevations of the Ample Grove property is accepting their recent build of a similar product. Part of why the apartment complex was, was not ideal was the elevation and density. And this just feels like apartments in a different style. So I guess that, that would be my, my feedback to at least the three story units. I know there's a mix in terms of two story and three story ones. But the, the tall peaks on a three story condo, you know, pretty much like the apartment complex. So yeah, in terms of what it looks like from, from the surrounding neighborhood.
Yeah, Dan?
And I'm probably on fine with the spectrum of this. I'm not convinced that, that residential should go here. I had persistent concerns about taking commercial, commercial land and, and putting housing there, which is what we've done. And I think we're going to have a long-term problem of having the services to support the population here. I do, I do agree however, with the planning commission's observation of the old U designation. I think that's probably outdated and kind of a, was a placeholder. You know, they, I'm also just not convinced on the commercial argument that, I mean, this is really, this property's been in place for what? Couple months now, just a few months, even though everybody's looked at it for generations, Saski was going to go there. So I'm, I'm not, not the place where I would move out. So that's, that's kind of what I'm at.
Okay, the panel comments? Okay, with all that in mind, and we're all here, it's going to be a very long process as we continue to talk about this property. I'm happy to now open it up to public comment. Please come up to the podium and state your name and address.
I'm Scott Duman, and I live on the south side of Lake Marion. Do the 165 units that are proposed here, what is the driveway space? If there's only one stall there, okay, if there's two, but there's still only 30 additional parking spots in the whole, on that original drawing. So I don't think that's even enough to accommodate people that live there. If they have people and guess where are they going to park on the street?
It says 669 stalls is what it says.
Okay. But the additional ones that were blanked for people to come in and just park, I thought there was.
330 visitor and?
Yeah, these right here, here and right here.
Down the road, I'm just going up the number on the grid.
And the, all right. All right. There, you guys already mentioned, there's only three exits out. 202nd and Dodd is such a nightmare already on the weekends. You actually have to go south in order to go north. You're going to turn around. Ammler Park, that goes out into the turnaround, that's going to be a very complex area. One of the things about Ipana and 50 with the daycare, okay, the railroad track already goes across up there. Is there not a possibility of putting a road out to here and have it going east only? Then people don't want to go north.
We don't control access on the county road.
Huh?
The city can't control access on the county road, that's the challenge.
I mean, that would be a tough solution. The, I think the entertainment area and the daycare and that, I think those are going to become, hey, I don't want to walk all the way from the school. Let's go park in the daycare lot because it's right across the street from the park. So let's just park there and walk across. And I think anything you put over there is going to wind up having people park there just because they don't want to walk all the way from the school. And I, I think, I guess in my view, that I think they should put more parking there for Ammler's Park so that they can use it and then try to find places or businesses like maybe a bowling alley, other things that relate to entertainment that people can use that parking space for that. A restaurant is a good idea. I think it's more of a commercial type plot than a residential type plot. That's just my opinion.
Well, others, I guess maybe just for efficiency, if you do want to speak, maybe just line up at this corner here and then we'll just kind of take care.
Jill Lawrence, 9715 202nd Street West. You may recall that many of us were in the same room on February 24th, 2025. We were here to discuss this very same Warwick outlet, outlet F. I would like to refer you back to the minutes from that meeting under section B, third paragraph, which states, Goodroad and McKenney gave a presentation regarding potential development on a 25 acre lot for sale by Ammler's Park. Goodroad emphasized that nothing had been presented to the city. And everything being presented tonight is what a proposal could look like. Actually, in listening to the audio today from the work session, and I am paraphrasing here, Mr. McKenney stated that he basically just made it up. He had nothing to go from, it was just his ideas. Mrs. Goodroad, Ms. Goodroad stated that unlike the 210th property, which had a developer, a potential buyer, she knew this property would be up for sale and would experience similar, similar zoning requests. So she just thought it was a good idea to include it. It seems amazing that that almost same proponent proposal minus the apartment building, but adding a focal fix, I don't even know how you say that word, retail space is before us. And the remaining 165 market rate, two and three story townhomes are almost unchanged. Now, I'd like to refer to the memorandum to the planning comis, committee from Tina Goodroad's dated September 10th, 2025, sketch plan review, paragraph three. In February, the applicant presented an initial concept plan to the city council during a work session, which included apartments and townhomes. At that time, the council directed the applicant to preserve as much commercial area as feasible while recognizing the site limitations. The council also expressed support for retail uses that would complement Ammler's Park. So my first question of the night, were we being lied to in February? Or was the planning commit, committee being lied to on September 10th? Was the city working with this applicant in February as the applicant's own filings indicate? And did the city know that, that the city council know there was an applicant because you all seemed as surprised as we were? The only thing that's changed from that meeting to this is that outlet D, which is the property behind me, has been sold. That's medium density and all likelihood that is what was being built there. It's already possible, we're adding 112 units to the area. The impact on Iplava and the park is substantial. Already have to make a right turn to go left. And your studies are useless because 31% increase over an entire day doesn't take into account time banks of when already it's impassable. My second question is, what's the plan to fix the problem? We know that the traffic pattern is a problem. This particular parcel, which hasn't been up for sale very long, I'm encouraging you, take your time, fix your issues, seek out other ideas, other uses. The city has no timeline here. We have evidence. There's over 3,000, I believe, units currently either plotted, and that was in June, plotted or under development. Take your time and don't be pushed into rezoning an issue that doesn't, in an area that doesn't come. Wait for somebody that wants to put in low density. A developer will come. You haven't had the big developers. You guys are in an enviable position here of being the fastest growing city. Wait for the developer that wants to develop this land and to use that best suits it. In the meantime, fix the traffic problems. Thank you.
Boj?
I'm Kim Newby. I live at, at the four way stop by Ammler's. I wasn't planning on talking or anything, but I agree with everything that's been said. And another concern that no one has brought up on 202nd Street West, since I live right on that street, is there's no sidewalks. Potentially for a developer, people are walking in the field, people are walking or biking just on that tiny gravel. It's very unsafe. And then we see through Iplava and 202nd, like emergency vehicles just fly. So that's something to think about for the future with more, with it being developed and just having like a wider, you know, you're not touching it at all. It's very unsafe. I'm surprised there's not been any accidents. It's scary watching them fly through. So just something else. Thank you.
Are we got questions?
Cutting it down, I live on.
Cutting it down. I live on Lake Marion, and then I have McDonald's I Care on 50. So I have questions, cuz I've sat for many planning. What do we envision Lakeville to be like in the next 10 years? I think I've done three of them. What's the age demographic that you guys see having that need for that, those units?
I'd say the primary theme right now is the barbell being, you know, both seeing young families with kids and 55-plus that are looking to downsize out of their 4,000 square foot house that wanna live in a maintenance free.
55 and plus isn't gonna want two and three stories. They are, it's not. And that was a demographic that on the last time, or two times ago, that we felt we needed more housing that would fit that niche. Because what is your rent gonna go for? What is your market study right now that your investors said this looks good?
Like, two stories, obviously, three stories is a lot, so I'm totally with you there, but 55-plus are pretty active still, and they're able to, they like the benefit of the two-story product. Specifically to your question on rental price, it's 2,600 for the two beds and around 3,000 for three beds. Which again is, if you put that into, I know it sounds like a lot, but if you put it to a 30-year amortization schedule and and look at the median household value in a city like Lakeville, it's anywhere from $500 to $1,500 cheaper per month to rent here than to buy.
Right now. In today's environment. I, I just am concerned about the land use or the lack of green space. That was one of the things that was disheartening when we found, when I looked the first time at Antlers and went, hmm, the grass is all gone. To me, there's not much green space. And I'm not gonna support high density, or medium, medium density, cuz to me, this is high, so.
My name's Rick Ringisen. I live at 2085 Italy Avenue, on the first house north of Antlers Park. I was one of the last employees when Antlers Park was a private industry and hosted company picnics and things like that. I actually met my wife there. So I've watched the park, my family's owned the property since the 40s. So I'm very intimate with all of it. But I know, I knew George, and I know where it's at. But for me, it's not just about this piece of land. It's about this land over here that's gonna be developed, that's already in touch. So we're talking bodies and people that are going into here. And we have space across the Kenwood Trail, too, as well. We have a traffic circle, which is great. This is a four-way stop, and it goes right into a neighborhood, and it goes around the lake, and this is, and then we also have pedestrian pathway here, too. Kids come off the top of the hill, and through that light, they're going pretty fast. Jill already talked about the fact that this has become a right turn only for us if, at certain times of the day. Not right now, not a problem, but in the morning, when school's happening, and we're going, and we don't have like an hour of school, our, I'm a district employee, our, our school in the morning, we have staggered start times all morning long, and the way our boundaries are set up, everything's south of Highway 50 and west of 35W goes to south. So a lot of people from the north side of town have to get to the south side. According to our Director of Transportation, this is the number two road in our community for bus traffic. All right? I mean, it's buses all day long going on here. And it's, and it's really busy. In fact, if you go here, you'll find buses parked in here because that's a nice lot for them to sit in before, between their runs, to do those kind of things. So it, it is super busy. And, yeah, so the park is busy in, you know, the three months in the summer, and then the other nine months, we're dealing with school traffic. And that, that's a real thing. So if there was another way out of there, you know, like you're looking at this, but you're going right into a business here. Now, on this end, you got trucks moving, and like I said, with the people here. If you're gonna put an exit here, you're gonna have to make that right turn home. There's people coming, I can't, I have a hard time taking a right-hand turn if the light is green because people come so fast. And they're coming around the corner, and it's a ni-, it is a nice road, so they are moving, they are moving at a pretty good speed. So, so that's really an issue. To me, this is high density. When you start looking at two and three stories, you're talking about kids. And I see not a single bike path in here, and that's what we're best known for in our community. There should be a bike path through here, so people can move and get, and I don't know if you've had any experience with pedestrians at roundabouts. It's not a good mix. All right? It's, it, there's, there, everybody says roundabouts are safer, not for pedestrians. Okay? Because if I'm going into a roundabout, I'm looking left, and where's the pedestrian? On the right. Okay? So we gotta slow that down. And if anybody's been around schools when kids are out, we have a large number of kids. Buses don't transport the majority of our kids anymore. Most of our kids are driven, or they're driving themselves for those kind of things. So that's, that's a problem. I look over here, and I see the Mylan property, and if, you know, somebody must have talked to the Mylan, because if that was my property and you were having this meeting tonight, I'd be here. How dare you draw a plan including my land on those type of things? I mean, and it's a daycare, oh, it's a strip retail, oh, that's better, I like that. All right, but it's still land that it's easier to make a plan when you have the whole, the whole tract, to do those kind of things. Pardon? Yeah, exactly.
No, wrap it up.
Okay, sorry. All right. So the number two road. I just want you to know that I think the city should look into, instead of looking at park fees, look into trading land for park fees here, so that we can maybe get some green space in here. There's, there's gonna be kids, and there's no place for kids to play other than the street. I mean, there's not a front yard, it's just parking. And there's only, there's like 30 spots, like Scott said, that's enough room for 16 or 17% of the people to have a visitor there. And you're right, I like what you said, parking's gonna go back and forth. People from the park are gonna go over here and park, and vice versa. They're gonna have to do those things. And I'm very concerned about Antlers Park because Antlers Park is a jewel right now. It's, it's beautiful. The remodel, people use the park well, people are great. But if we start throwing 600, 700 people, 1,000 people including over here, and these people are gonna use it because they're gonna see that as an attraction to live there. If, we are gonna take what is really our, our best part and turn it into a park that people aren't gonna wanna be there. Right? Cuz it's too crowded. So, thank you.
Sorry. I know you're just gonna enjoy this.
Yeah, on my way.
Yeah. Okay, any others? Again, I'm just, I'm trying not to cut you off in three minutes, but I really like to keep it at three minutes.
Peter Thielen, live at 12119 Lucerne Trail. Just to, on that, on that piece of property, I think that piece of property, it'd be a good piece of property for the city to own and to have a, a nice community center there, to go in conjunction with the parks. And, you know, that, that, that other property that they're talking about behind the Lawrence's there is already being just about ground broke there. But to have a, to have a nice community center right there to accent town, you know, downtown area, beautiful area with all the restaurants and stuff. Now, if we had a community center there for kids and whatnot, you know, whether it be an ice skating rink, a pickleball courts, just anything, anything in that order, you know, that, that property there would suit that, you know, for a thousand, 2,000 people in and out of there in a day or something, using ice rinks, pickleball courts, stuff like that, along with the traffic concerns that everybody's talking about, but I don't like the, I don't like the changing, changing this to the residential. I think it should stay, stay the, the business, and I think that the a community center would be perfect right there.
I don't wanna be glib, but if you find me $50 million, I'll build it.
Yes.
We should go and find the 50 million. Okay. Anybody else?
Okay.
Okay. I'm gonna have people that haven't gone in.
You already answered one of my questions. I wasn't sure if it was rental.
Name?
Jim Stafford, sorry, Lake, South Side of Lake Marion. You answered my question, it's rental, I didn't realize that, that. Is there any reason that this can't be higher-end, single-family homes instead?
Give Vince the land seller to lower the land price.
Well, I'm just asking for an alternative to everybody's concerns, you know, traffic, volume, high density, all that sort of stuff.
And when it was raised to the planning commission, they, they had mentioned it's not the right fit for single-family homes. You know, meaning since it's so high traffic on all the different roads.
I mean, lots of, lots around here selling for, I don't know, what, 150, 200,000? Somewhere in there. And if these were higher-end homes, it just seems like, because of the lake and the attraction to the lake and that area of town, there's a lot of higher-end homes around North High School and, and South High School. Just seems like economically, it might work out to put higher-end home, million-dollar homes are not a big deal these days. Put million-dollar homes in there, you probably have a third, maybe, or a quarter of the people that you're proposing, so that's all.
You can take off that.
Bob Erickson, 19081 Endale Drive, Mayor and House Members. Staff, thank you for this opportunity. I think most of the concerns have been expressed. Not in a context of not in my backyard, but more about the meaningful use of the property, considering the challenges that the City Council is all aware of regarding the transportation aspects. Rick, you're right, it's the number two route for these school buses from 7:00 AM until 5:00 PM every day for the entire district, uses Ipana, which is oftentimes referred to as school road. Some of the things that came to my attention was the, residents calling me, that talked to me, the Zons, the Stobies, the Ringisons, people that have lived here a long time, who adjusted to change, I think, appropriately, and who appreciated the challenges that have been shared with regard like to Antlers, to the mayor's credit. The restaurant that was, expressed concerns about on the site have worked out quite well. So, and there was concerns about that at the beginning as well. I'd like to know what, and Community Development Director could respond to this at the end here. What, what's a mixed-use PUD definition for this property? What's the, the multitude of uses that can occur under a mixed-use PUD? Would that be a precedent that could impact the land use on the property immediately north of 202nd Street? Which is a concern of residents, as you've heard this evening. George Worley told me 35 years ago that he believed, and he wasn't in, at that moment in history, wasn't particularly excited about the Ipana being upgraded. And we had some challenges, including a special assessment that he didn't particularly appreciate. But he, he had a vision for a commercial office park and was active when the comprehensive plan was adopted. And if he were standing here today, of course, the development wouldn't occur because he'd continue to farm the property.
30 seconds, fine.
I'll, I'll go with it. So to me, it's the first step in this process has to be the transportation challenge. And the county has to be brought into this conversation, and there has to be a meaningful view of what to be, what needs to be done. This was demonstrated by whites and the, and the daycare, demonstrated how you can effectively, effectively make something work in the form of new ingress and egress, which needs to happen on this property, just like it happened effectively by the city staff and the city council, planning commission, when that was done. And I think everybody would agree how well that's worked, and something of that magnitude, that focus can occur here as well, but it has to go first, not chasing an opportunity that is evolved from the estate of George Worley.
We've, we've gone about 15 minutes longer than we planned on this item, so I just we're gonna be happy to take it. This is up, I got an email from somebody who's trying to get in to make a comment, but I don't, it's a reason why I wouldn't.
I did.
The map up. I'll give you 90 seconds.
When you mention the railroad, you mentioned the railroad. What do you have to do to possibly put an exit going east?
It's on the railroad, it's county, it's, it's county, you know.
Well, with the county. Maybe that's a solution, but to help on 202nd and Dodd.
I would say, I think we always have conversations, I think the bigger conversation with them has been to get in on heritage, and they've been very hesitant, so just far as precedent goes.
90 seconds.
Okay.
Jeff Anemus, 19371 Jersey Avenue. Somebody pointed out the property that's just south of 205 there, I mean, the Highway 50, there's also the north one, across from me, the Serena, that's gonna be developed, too. And that's gonna bring more traffic to that area, so that needs to be considered as well. Number two, we've added a ton of rental properties, the ones going up in 35W in the corner by Target, that's being developed right now. I don't know how many units that is, but that's a tremendous amount of apartments, as well as we proved the Eris Apartments up by Fleet Farm. So again, more apartment opportunities there for people to live in. And number three, the estate, somebody said they had a point about the estate. I know they're not gonna give you as much money, but it, it's not zoned for what they wanna get money for. So yeah, they might get money from this party, and I, you know, I agree it's what they wanna do, but this is not the right spot for it. And if we just say, hey, sorry, it's zoned this way, eventually they're gonna find a buyer for that property the way it's currently zoned. We can't keep on rezoning stuff because somebody wants to rezon stuff. That's it. Thank you.
That was 66. Anybody else here?
Got a few seconds for me.
Yep.
Wasn't necessarily gonna come up.
Well, we have 24.
Yeah, 24. Scott Danielson, 20347 Indiopath. Relatively new resident, been here five years, so I appreciate all of you that have been here for 20, 30, 40 years welcoming us into it. This was kind of a destination spot for us. It's getting emotional. So I, I can appreciate trying to find affordable housing and being diverse in housing needs. I think we have plenty of, like you just made the point, we have plenty of rental if it's needed. We have for the 55-plus, I, I still, you know, this doesn't cut it. I like, I agree with the statements on that. Being in the station in life where I am, we have two school-age kids, and they're active. I drive Ipana 20 times a day. So if you do a traffic study, 20 of them are me. They're in hockey, so I am at arenas all day long. So when it comes to that, I just think being in other towns with hockey tournaments, sport tournaments, sporting events, I think we should use this as a commercial avenue. It's close, it's right across the street from Ames. It's close enough to Hasi from a hockey parent, that you could put something there for teams to go to. We have no place in town for tournament. For tournament, I mean, you can go to Baldi's for a little bit, it's okay. But when you got 15, 20, 30 teams in town, there's no place for them to go to do anything and bring outside money in. I know this is a tax thing. We all know cities function on taxes, property tax is a huge part of that. But bring in money from Woodbury, bring in money from Eden Prairie, any diner. Let's take their money instead of just milking the residents for it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have fun with private sales, bud. Okay. Council, any other comments or questions? You got some feedback from us today. I don't, doesn't sound like it's consensus to... You got some feedback from us today. I don't doesn't sound like consensus to for the zoning and happy to have further conversation, but I think that's kind of where we're at. All right. With that, we'll move on to our next item, East Community Park Survey Results and Preferred Master Plan. Our master plan concept. I'll turn over our parks director, Mr. Macey Archer. Yeah, you don't want to say everybody part. And it's talk about green space. We're gonna talk about green space. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. I'm the city council. I'm excited to share East Community Park, the latest draft of the master plan for the development. So as a quick reminder, East Community Park is the last park project tied to twenty twenty one park bond referendum. So this park is in design for this year will be completed here or scheduled for construction in twenty twenty six. So the park was went through a planning process with ISG of consultants. They developed three different master plan concepts based off of previous community feedback from previous designs. And that was tailored down to two ultimate designs, which went out for public comment. Those were available for public survey, both through signs that were located in parks on the northeast side of town. And then also through over a thousand postcards that went out to residents. ISG did a presentation for park and rec commission. And through that, the design has been finalized to one concept. One preferred concept and kind of blending together best pieces of those signs. So the area that's outlined here is truly the part that we're talking about for East Community Park. As a quick reminder, we already have an existing access to east on the southern portion of the park. Where we've got parking lot playground and the diamond. So scrolling down here quick, over two hundred comments were received on the park design. Between the two concepts, concept A, concept B, and I just give a title there. The concepts were were kind of similar as far as layouts, but indeed with our direct mission, ultimately, the concept B is the one that is going to be forward or is recommended to go forward. Reviewing some of the important components, and this is where I would say we took really the best components from concept A and concept B and blended them together into this design. So that includes overlook in the park. There was a lot of importance placed on trails and connectivity. The four season restroom building was an important concept as well, and that is tied to the part of the development that we're doing with the county. So we'll be receiving approximately four hundred thousand dollars from the county towards the project to fund that as part of the North Greenway. But aside from that, natural play, dog park areas, and then one of the other big components that was focused on was access to the water. So I should skip to that one. The concept that they were leaning towards really leaned a lot into they called it heritage, but really leaning into kind of the farming aspect or farming history of the property. And so leaning into that also timing the branch and farm and some of those ideas is really where this final plan together.
Joe, was there any conversation that at any point like to mimic Whitetail Woods a little bit with like camper cabins in this area? Is that like a little bit more than we want to fight off or chew or?
Yeah, so we, one of the concepts, and in fact, one of the concepts that did go out was that community cabin thought process. And what we were finding and we noted it through some of the public engagements that we did. We also did a pop-up event at Nanoborg where we took feedback from the public. It is leaning a lot towards a Ritter Farm aspect. And it was heading down the road of environmental learning and it was going down kind of that route. And we've got rid of that kind of that that aspect. So that's where I think this plan.
Very close.
Yeah. So you can see some of their inspiration pieces here, some of their inspiration images that that helped develop the plan. But zooming in here then for you. The master plan itself shifts parking and access into the park in the south portion of this part of the property. Part of the reason why that was important through public feedback was to have this park function now as two separate facilities, but truly as one park and to increase access to the restrooms on the more active side of the facility where we've got the athletic deck and and those items. We added then a large dog park area, so over two acres for that, as well as the small dog park area. So again, based off of public feedback. Where I would say this is potentially going to be different than what we have at Ritter Farm Park is that it'll have more of the base structures. So some of the agility pieces, some of those dog playground type pieces, which is a little bit different than what we've got in other locations. We have this open lawn space identified. It could technically be an athletic deck. It's not our intention to program this as an athletic deck. It was be something we could use in an emergency really, but the intention is for that to be more just open lawn space for community. The other area then down here is so area seven would be Lakeville's first community gardens. Which we're excited about. We designed this in a way in which we're trying to minimize maintenance while maximizing access to for the public to be able to have garden plots. The proposal is for thirty plots. At this point, it's designed so that it could be doubled. We could potentially have sixty if it's if there's a need down the road. Otherwise, the area next to it will be used for staging area and access, making up, you know, debris and those types of things. And again, I was referencing that connectivity to have the park function kind of as as one cohesive part. So two boardwalks are proposed to connect to the diamond. So one's the diamond and then one by the playground area, again, increasing access to the forests and restrooms. And then a new playground area is proposed right around two thousand square feet. That's about half the size of what a standard playground would be for us. Most are thirty five hundred, four thousand for like a neighborhood park. But adding that feature on both sides of the creek made a lot of sense. This would also be designed in a way where it would be more farm themed. So you'll see some of the example imagery when I zoom down. But one of the other components I wanted to highlight, aside from the the shelter is, and this was a concept that was taken from concept A, is a larger plaza area. So a larger space for gatherings as well as tiered seating, step seating that is going to help to create a really nice smooth lake. So that was taken from concept A. Before I move on. Outlook proposed for the northeast portion. So there's a nice knoll on top of the hill where Environmental Services have been doing some work. So an outlook area there with some seating. And then there's three proposed fishing areas and a kayak launch. So those are kind of those access to the water and then these that I was referencing. I'm gonna scroll down quick though, just so you can see again, kind of the examples, some of the inspiration that they were pulling from. So play areas, play structures, the seating areas. An example of the community garden, so raised bed community garden is what we're looking at. With that, we're also going to be exploring higher raised beds for accessibility. So a combination of both. That tiered seating that I was referencing towards the lake, these would be some examples of that. So whether it be composite decking or whether that be on a concrete. The thought process was this would be a great space for, for example, puppet wagon. And it's designed to pull the puppet wagon in front, built in seating, or a few other types of presentation presentations for events that would work well. The water amenities or water access, I'm going to show you these two. So kayak launch would be this is an example of that. And then a shade structure and fishing area is what we're looking at for some of those other improvements. So I think would make a really nice gathering spot if you're walking the trail in the day sunset, great spot to hang out. Otherwise, there's not a lot of shade on some areas of that lake. So having shade structure, I think, will work in really well. And that's something a little bit different than what we've got in other locations. The place structures that I was referencing, some of those farm food structures, this leans more into that concept. So not a traditional playground. But leaning more into animal structures and those types of things was really the concept. And then you can see pulling in again, some of those natural amenities, the connector pieces, but some some natural play features.
What's the size comparison to the Ritter Farm Dog Park?
Yeah, so Ritter Farm Dog Park is about around seven acres in total. It's around an acre and a half of that is small dog, the rest is large dog, so smaller, but this is a this is a generous sized dog park.
Bigger than originally.
Bigger than we originally proposed. That is correct. Yep, based off of feedback. And then in here, you can just see some of the other improvements that they've been pulling from kind of inspiration. Again, interpretive signage, which will lead along the the greenway, and this ties into similar signage that we have by Antlers Park, where we've been working with the county. Otherwise, green infrastructure where we can help to deal with water infiltration and those types of things. So so that's a very quick review of what the proposal includes. So beyond that, can stand for any questions?
Council questions?
The community garden work?
Sure. So there's a couple of different ways community gardens can work. This is intended, well, so in the same way that we would release reservations for our kayaks, which we do in February, so kayak launches, we would do the same thing with community garden. The difference with this versus what we do with kayaks, you get essentially first rights of refusal. People tend to do different types of soil amenities for their plots. So if you had it last year and you amended your soils specifically, we're going to give you first crack at having access to that. Beyond that, it opens back up to the public. But from staff, it would require little maintenance on the front end seasonally. But we would help with getting it cleaned up at the end of season. We'll have a bin for vegetation so that that can be taken off site. So from a staff perspective, it's managed easily, but you're ultimately responsible for turning over your own soil and spraying and all of that. We've also, one other thing I'll add is that in the community, I was saying previously, we worked very closely with the garden clubs and have them available to work with residents as well. So if you have questions because you're tomatoes, I'm going to prove we then have a conduit for you to be able to talk to people.
Or council questions? I just, I love the design there in the dog park. I think it's good, especially in the shade. I saw the tiered plaza and it's just a word of encouragement. The first thing I saw and I looked out and I looked at that skateboard. That's the very first thing I thought. So but I I know that there are designs and materials that you can use that will limit the ability. I just wanted to make sure that we consider that.
We don't rent canoes. We cannot rent the launches. Yeah. So we rent space for people to store. The rats. Correct. Do that. We don't. We will do that here. Yep. Yep. So this will be a new site. We currently don't have a launch site here. So this would be another location we can add it. We typically with the amount of available kayak storage locations we have, they're typically rented within the first day or two that we release them. They're going incredibly fast.
Could you technically have paddleboard? Could you have a paddleboard there if you wanted that set? Like, does it matter?
Yeah, so you could, with the way that this is being designed, you could bring in, and we see that at antlers, for example, where people will bring in their old kayak. So you could do, you could paddleboard here that guess. East is not designed for any motor, not even troll.
Yes.
So.
Is is east going?
So east.
Big gold.
Big goldfish. East is a lake that environmental is doing a lot of work on to eliminate carbon fish. There are, there are valuable fish in the lake, especially in that northern portion where it's deeper.
Is there any resources, like long term thinking that we could to make it swimmable or is it just not?
Yeah. East is really not designed as a swimmable lake, partly because it's it takes a lot of water coming from the neighborhoods. The depth is part of that and it wasn't, it's not a historic, you know, it's a manmade lake.
Yeah.
So.
What does the shoreline look like? Think about changing that viewpoint at all from where it is right now?
Yeah, so the area that's actually outlined before is an area that is being designated for shoreline restoration, which would help to install native plants, but also beyond that will help to increase the use of the lake. That's something that in our talks with Dakota County, they're very interested in because of the greenway connection and something we talked to environmental about as well.
It's a very scenic location right now. I was looking at that shelter dog, you know, and you would get kind of hit by the overgrowth right now.
Yeah, so this is a little bit of a higher part of the property. And you're right, I actually didn't even go to that page, the shelter page. Go for it. Shelter. So that's the proposed shelter. Which has again, the four season restrooms, so the around restrooms. Two unisex restrooms plus a decent shelter space. So seventy two capacity is what this is being designed for. The intention and part of the reason why it was positioned on the property in this way is to get that kind of scenic view of the lake. So.
I like the concept. I think it's great. I think it really adds a lot of different amenities we don't have in other places. The one thing I don't really have an answer, but just free to think about, we were interviewing some students tonight for youth commission. One of them goes to Farmington. Just thinking about how we try to continually like make the people who go to Farmington School feel very included in the city. And I know this is in theory could be a I don't know what the outreach is or whatever, but I'm just throwing that out. But maybe the ultimate first be team at Farmington wants to play on the open lawn or something like that. Other comments, questions? Nice job. Great. Looking forward to it. What's the timeline?
So we'll take this back, tweak a couple of things. Our intention is to get the master plan to a hundred percent by December, go up to the January, February. Spring-ish construction timeline, but twenty six when we start construction.
Okay, and then opening twenty seven?
Most likely. Yeah, very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Let's move on to fire department. I T M spec test contained.
I know you're excited for this.
Yeah, I'm wondering who's who's teeing this up?
I'll tee it up there and then I'm going to turn over to the Ritter Fire Inspector.
All right.
So we brought this forward to the public safety committee back in July, what the I T M is, and he'll break it all in more detail. It's just a self-reporting tool that we can use that integrates into our current records management system. So by code right now, any business that has fire protection in their building has to have that completed annually depending on the system. But they don't, it's not self-reporting. So it's just the company doing that or the business doing that. And then they have a tag on their system saying, yes, it was inspected. We necessarily don't visit every building every year, so we may not see that building for three years. As example, like in the industrial park, we we set up a schedule to every third year. So this just helps get that compliance and making sure that things are happening. And if there's an issue, then that's reported to us through the software. I'll let you kind of go from there by this thing and kind of.
That was great, yeah. So the big pitfall right now is that there's no requirement for those contractors to do annual inspection to submit their reports to us. They're only required to submit them by code to the building owner. And those reports include deficiencies, stuff that doesn't meet code currently and stuff that necessarily wouldn't red tag the system, but puts the system at risk for non-compliance down the road. So today, code requires a tag on sprinkler systems and a tag on extinguishers and a tag on alarm systems, but they're not required to post paperwork on any of them. So when we go into a business, say in every third year business and I say it was due in July, didn't get inspected. I reach out to the building owner because they're not there. It's a commercial occupancy that maybe they're just the building owner. I say, hey, you know, you're you're behind three months, whatever, on your annual inspection for your sprinklers. And they're like, oh, yeah, they did it. I'll get you the report. So we set up our re-inspections for thirty days, go back after thirty days later, if I ever see anything, call them again. Hey, oh, yeah, they did it. They were supposed to email it to you. Okay, well, they didn't email it to me. So we start the cycle. It's a it's a never ending loop on some of these buildings where it's a out of city owner of the building and somebody that doesn't have presence on premise. This closes the loop on everything and gives us an opportunity to get every inspection report submitted to the department. Uh, this closes the loop on everything and gives us an opportunity to get every inspection report submitted to the department for review or approval, including a list of deficiencies. So we know our buildings that are falling behind on five-year hydro tests and ten-year hydro tests and FDC tests, which are non-tagged items in the space. They may not show up unless you get a deficiency report. Uh, anyways, in doing that, uh, in August of last year, I started researching vendors that offer this service. The biggest one is Bricer. They, uh, compliance engine is the one that they put out. Uh, they were kind of first to market with ITM products, so they're in a lot of departments around the city, uh, around the, the cities. Um, so a lot of the big metro departments use Bricer. Uh, Liv is one that spun off from people that left Bricer to do their own thing because they saw there's an opportunity to split the market and make money on both sides. Uh, and then the third solution was through First Two, who is a first-party RMS provider. They do our record management for fire calls, everything else. Um, they saw this as an opportunity to bring it in-house, stop leaving money out to a third party to do the same thing that they can do in integrated systems. Uh, anyways, we went through demos and trials with all three of them. Uh, Bricer, probably the most polished, obviously, because they've been in the market the longest. Uh, Liv had taken a lot of the core framework from Bricer and then put their own spin on it. But their integration into our record management system was basically the same because First Two dictates what third-party companies can bring in and out of their system. Uh, First Two, new to the ITM realm, but they brought people in from both Liv and Bricer to help them develop the backend. Uh, the huge benefit for us is it directly integrates that ITM reporting, deficiency reporting, contact updates, everything directly into our pre-plans. So, um, we're getting that live feed of information. So when a contractor goes in to enter a annual report and they've got a new building owner, a new building owner contact, and they put it in the system, it'll automatically bring that into our pre-plans. So that when we go out on a radio fire alarm call and we're looking at a keyholder sheet that hasn't been updated in three years, and we call somebody, they're like, I don't, I don't know that building this. We have live updates of, of who's doing, who's paying for it, and who is the contact for it every year that it comes. Um, I think that's the condensed version of it. Happy to answer any questions if you read through my thrilling, uh, fact and information. There were no graphics, sorry.
How do the three compare from a cost?
Uh, so internally, there's no cost to the departments. Uh, Bricer is the most expensive outwardly to the contractors. So the way these are funded is the contractors that do the inspections have to pay to submit their reports to the ITM. So they, it's a tokening system. They pay five dollars for extinguishers, they pay ten dollars for alarms, they pay twenty per, again. Um, Bricer's the most expensive, uh, Liv undercut them a little bit to try and take some of the market. And First Two took a completely different approach to it. So where the other two charge you for every report you do, uh, First Two charges you for the submission. So if I go out to a business as, say, Summit, and I do the fire alarm, I do the sprinklers, and I do the extinguishers, and I do a kitchen hood, because I do all of them, I only pay for that visit to be submitted, uh, as a, as a piece. That's my only cost. And that their cost is, is across the board the same for all their.
And we're not necessarily looking for guidance on a specific vendor tonight. Um, we're more just looking at, is this a concept that you're okay with? Because it would be a cost to the businesses. It would be an additional level on, on their end.
And now, that was my question, uh, because it would require an ordinance change to, uh, to, I'm assuming to implement that cost.
Uh, the ordinance change is just to ensure that the vendors working in the city know that they're bound by ordinance to submit through our ITM. Currently, there's no requirement at the state or municipal level for them to submit.
Yeah, my, my only concern on, I, I mean, I think it makes sense because I think at the end of the day, the businesses are going to want to have it, it's mine, but I get nervous if we don't control the fee, we go down this road and then all of a sudden, three, five, seven years from now, the contractors are hurting a ton more. Do we have recourse to going to reel that back in?
And, and we're talking about twenty-five dollars is like the submission fee. There's, it's not hundreds of dollars for that submission.
So what you said, like by the, I'm thinking like, oh, Amazon might have to pay.
So, no. So if I, if I go out to Amazon and I do their six hundred extinguishers, their sprinkler system, their pump, everything, I may have a submission cost of forty-five dollars.
God, okay. I would, I thought for each of the devices.
No, no. And so in, in talking to the vendors that offer ITM, it's a mixed bag between if the contractor directly puts that money on to the business owner, or if they eat that because this leads to significantly more work for them in the long run, because businesses are actually having to do the maintenance that they're not necessarily reporting in, in today's market. And the Public Safety Committee reviewed this.
I think it was, uh, it was a good idea to move forward, especially about the amount of businesses we have. Having compliance and then the pre-planning, uh, piece was a huge part for me, uh, having access to that information was huge for our firefighters, so.
The keyholder information alone, you know, along with the, the record inspections. That's huge because, yeah, otherwise it just isn't.
Of course, that was kind of what drew me in the first part, because I spent thirty percent of my time chasing down dead leads for businesses and stuff, when I'm trying to follow up on the inspections. It's a big one.
Does this, does this software help us at all with when we do building mapping? By having better context? I'm just wondering if there's like added benefit. You know, because we've done a critical, considering mapping in schools, for instance. We're doing that for other buildings.
Not necessarily the mapping decent, just gives us a context. So if we are going to go in as far as it adds to that.
Okay. So it's not like those things can work too, like the information we're getting.
Goes into.
It goes into that.
Goes into that pre-plan. So now we know that you are the contact for that building.
Yeah. Makes sense?
Okay. So next up would be, we'd bring this forward as a, uh, we'd have to go through the draft piece of ordinance and, uh, the city attorney, and then bring that to council.
For football. Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
And then are you guys staying up for the design or are you? No, I have to warn you, Stan. Yeah, thanks everybody. Thank you. Go get them, guys.
Uh, Mayor, Council, thank you. Uh, tonight, we're going to take a look at where we're at, the, uh, new fire station. Uh, that's been called Fire Station Five, Fire Station Two Four, got multiple names, first called New Fire Station, I think, for now. Um, we brought in Quinn Hudson and Brooke Jacobson, who are the architects. They've been, uh, working with staff, uh, for the past, uh, twenty-some plus weeks or more, and, um, kind of refined the design a little bit. I'm just going to turn it over to them to kind of show where we started from back in twenty-twenty-three when we did the method study and how we got to today. So I'll turn it on.
Okay, so through it to the, the council there. Uh, I'm going to start by going back a little bit and talking just where we came from in this process. But as, uh, you mentioned, we, uh, completed the, uh, Lakeville Fire Department facility study, uh, actually two years ago this month. Uh, a little bit of time since that was completed and obviously we're going to have to do fires about. Um, but from that, that study, we, uh, had evaluated all the, the, the full department, all the statements and process and where you're looking, or where you are, where you're going, what conditions are. And from that, we kind of identified some best, best practice, uh, for our fire station goals. Uh, that we typically see, uh, and, and like to, you know, focus on, first of all, focus on physical and mental health. Uh, that's really a critical part and probably the most emerging part as a paid fire service, uh, within the station and the operations. Uh, secondly, we look at partial reduction of, so accidents, which gotten removed. Um, and through that sort of hotfold zone design, um, and providing equipment and for, uh, and providing decontamination for equipment and for firefighters, uh, in the station, uh, much of which just doesn't exist in the whole station. We also looked at onsite training, uh, priorities for regular, what we call firefighter one, everyday tech training. All these are things that are done while they're at the station, ready to respond. So it's, it's not the thing that would be more depth. That can happen at different times and different places, but mostly have things that can happen and a training they can do weekly, uh, while they're, uh, in between calls. Uh, and then, uh, designing the future. Uh, of course, you know, this needs to be flexible for changes that come down the road. That's an important part of any, you know, municipal design, uh, and so with that, we'll, yeah, all the spaces, future growth, things like that. So those were some of the things that came out of the study. We had some specific goals at that point then that were kind of addressed. And the decision was to combine Station Two and Four, which were the things we looked at individually, or combined, whether it's what made the whole steps for the departments. And so it was decided to look at that combined station, uh, that we'll be talking more about today. Uh, we also, of course, had recommendations to address, uh, the needs of Stations One and Three, which would follow, like stations. Uh, starting with Station, uh, Five, Two Four, Five, whatever, uh, designation that ends up getting in the end, uh, the point.
Just call it six, if you're going to say four or.
So that's kind of where we, uh, started the, this next process of designing the station. But, you know, with that background of, of the study and what we learned from that and the goal of addressing it in this, this first round. Uh, so with that, we started the design process. Our, one of our first meetings, uh, we spent time really talking about what we would consider guiding principles, things that really should kind of help guide choices that are made throughout the process. And so the ones that these, uh, team, and then not us, you know, the staff team, um, you know, Devout was just really responsible. Future-focused, multifunctional, sustainable, organizational health and wellness, mental health-focused, history, and community-centered. So those were, those are just things that really touch on a lot of things that were integrated into the design process, into the goals for the, you know, for this station to, so that it really serves the community investment. So with that, uh, our first step in actual designing was, uh, we looked at the program. So looking at the space needs, uh, for the station. At that point, it had been, you know, probably over two years since we did the initial program, because that would have been the early part of the study. And, uh, we knew that at that point, uh, we really need to look at it again, refocus on it a little bit. And things have changed in some way. I mean, there's expanded knowledge that the department had about how the future is going to develop. There's been some movement in the transition of, of, uh, you know, service models. So there's something we learned from that. Uh, there were some decisions that were made about how spaces were distributed in between this combined station and Stations One and Three. I think, where are some of the things that suited will be, um, best operational department? So some things moved to the station out of One and Three to, again, better centralize and, and focus on the larger needs. So that was one of the things that we looked at in programming. And then the last thing I think that really had some impact, that changed in the program, uh, was, uh, just looking at EMS service, uh, and what that might be today and what that might be in the future, how that might affect, uh, you know, just what the, the facility need might be. So those are the, kind of the, the things that we really dove into and we redid the programming, uh, process, you know, from the, uh, study to this line station now. So, and that's kind of some impact that we'll be showing, you know, that the goal. So with that, as, uh, Alan mentioned, we've had twenty design meetings. Uh, staff have been very involved and helpful and, and looking at that plus feedback in between and all that. So we've really had a great, you know, start to this point. Uh, throughout that process, we had fourteen different floor plan, floor plan diagrams that each kind of reclined, looked at different options and refined down to where we're, we'll be showing tonight as well, um, throughout that process. So we've looked at a lot, explored a lot of things in this process.
Does the Public Safety Committee review the most recent?
And then, um, our last, most recent step was looking at what it might look like. You know, some of the material and image, we'll be showing some of that today as well. Through that process, we looked at, you know, six different versions and refined from there. And so we really, my point in that is they've been putting bottom work in with us to explore and really determine what is the best fit, um, you know, for the station, the department, and the city. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brooke to walk you through past and present a little bit on, on actual plans. And, uh, then we'll, and, and if any, please feel free to ask questions.
All right. Well, I'm going to, uh, start off, uh, just as we touched on a little bit on the initial study. Uh, so the first two, uh, drawings that we're going to look at are, are based on the study and then we'll move from there into the kind of design. So, right, what you see on the screen is the, um, site plan that we use in the study for the combined station. This is just showing a generic site, uh, we really focused on what is the best layout for the station itself. And then how do all the site pieces, um, work around that to develop, you know, what's that ideal kind of footprint for the site itself? To give, uh, the department enough information for, uh, land for that. So what you're seeing on the screen is we have our, our main kind of color-coded building, which we'll see more of in the floor plan. Um, the kind of right side of the building is the public, um, admin station office side, um, residents. The left side is where our, what you see in the red, the warmer colors, uh, where our apparatus and support spaces are. Um, and then from that, our main, um, public kind of access to the site is on the far right. It's where they would, um, enter, purple on here. Then down below was the admin parking, because we have separate entrances for our public and versus our admin. And our firefighters would enter the site, um, you know, kind of from this main drive, they park in the back side of the station. And then our apparatus would spawn directly straight up, out onto, um, the main road, that was here. So just delving in a little bit more on floor plans, a little bit. Um, so the front entrance, main entry is, is up here. Um, the public areas are coded in green. So you can see all of that as you come into entry. Um, those are, you know, classrooms, meeting spaces, uh, restrooms, lobby. Some of the, uh, green in the public area, especially at the main entrance, we always want to have our admin spaces adjacent to us. They can be off of that lobby and provide that public face if people are coming in. So you're seeing in the dark blue, our admin areas consisting of offices and some meeting rooms. As we move further into the station, our gray areas are a lot of our common spaces, whether it's verbal circulation, hand electrical spaces, some storage, things of that nature. And then the lighter blue is station office. That's where the firefighters mostly are working in, whether it's their workroom, fitness, these storage spaces for them as well. So kind of all those cool colors represent the, um, cold zone of the facility. And then the warmer colors, the light reds, dark reds, and yellows become the hot, warm zones of the building. We really want to make sure that we, um, separate those for the wells for the health and wellness, one of the guiding principles for the firefighters, so that we're keeping all of the carcinogens into the hot zones and not bringing those into those cold zones. Um, so you can see the, the dark red in the apparatus space, the lighter red is a lot of the support space or decon, um, support spaces. And then the yellow are kind of those transitional storage spaces, things of that nature. We go up to the second floor, the purple then is showing the residence area. And then the dark red is showing, um, some additional storage and, uh, training aspect. That's kind of the, the rough layout, um, for the, the original study. From there, we'll go on to the current design.
Brooke, just a little bit. So that original study, just so they can have a compare and contrast, that original study assumed seven firefighters. Full-time firefighters stationed there.
We have, uh, eight ones.
Eight, eight dogs. I just wanted.
It's the gift.
Yeah, I guess we all, what we had proposed in twenty-six million versus where we got to.
Yep.
So are those like burnstools where they, they're kind of, they're squad berets?
Okay.
It's a, it's a dorm suite. So what in each suite is a small hallway, we call the locker hallway, because they're going to shift, different shifts. Each have their own, um, locker. And then off of that hallway is accessed, um, a single restroom with shower, um, and then, uh, the dorm room. And so we do that so that, uh, and then those, you access the locker hallway off of the main hallway. And so we do that so that uh and then both you access the locker hallway off of the main hallway. Uh, and so we do that to help with um the one sound separation so that we're getting good sound separation around those dorm rooms, but also allows if um when shift change happens and somebody was out on a call and they need to catch up on some sleep, the next shift be pumped in, drop their stuff off in the locker hallway, use the restroom if they want without serving western. So on the site suite, we're seeing is the the overall um complete site um owned by the city. The fire station is using that kind of northwest corner of the the overall site. Um, so the what we're using is about three point eight four um acres of the site. Um, we focus on the fire station site itself. The main public access is located off of Dodd. They can access one of the two ways. The main uh drive that enters the site or this internal road that's been created uh that will provide access to the other areas of the site that get developed in the future. Uh, so there are two access points here and here for the public. Uh, the main entrance of the building is up here. We have our fitness entrance over here. So this allows public and city staff to park in this north parking lot and access both of those entryways. We have uh parking on this side for admin with their own separate admin entrance. Uh, so they can easily respond quickly if needed. They also have access to Dodd as well as Brandy from their parking lot as well. And then firefighter parking occurs on the back side of the apparatus space. Uh, they also have access, would have access off of that internal road. So if they come from Dodd, if needed, or from Brandy and our station.
In that first floor, the thirty-nine thousand square feet, how much is that this green public classroom area?
Um, the whole air, like all of the green?
Yeah.
Um, I have a pink number, um.
Fire is a very good.
So.
Roughly, that looks like somewhere under fifteen percent.
And then so I guess looking at thirty-five hundred square feet, thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred.
And then lastly, on the site, we have our apparatus space through here. They respond directly out to Brandy. From there, they can go north um to Dodd if needed, up into the neighborhoods. Or they can go south, get on to seventy-ninth down here, that will take us out to Cedar. Then um to the south of the station is the area that we are allowing for the stormwater retention on site situated between the station and these water tower. Um, both that stormwater and internal road, we're, you know, including as part of the project. Um, but only a fraction of that is um just for the fire station itself. The stormwater retention would also uh account for the rest of the developed sites as well as uh access after that internal road. Site as well. And then lastly, the rest of the site that's left over can be utilized um as that's already in in previous meetings, but for potential other city functions or in or um selling sounds for development as well. Moving into the current floor plan design for the station, uh just to show comparison, we did um far code the the green and the blue for the classroom and admin spaces similarly to um the study design. So that you just see that comparison, they're relatively similar there. Uh, our main entrance is on the left side of the screen. That brings me directly into the the lobby. That's where all the remaining of the public spaces are, which include those classrooms, some meeting rooms, some display and restrooms. From there, there's access to the rest of the station. So that dark blue you're seeing is the admin area, which consists of office offices and collaboration and some meeting space. They do have their own um separate entrance to quickly go out to their parked vehicles and respond if needed. Then everything else you're seeing in white is kind of the rest of the the station that is meant for firefighter use. So um everything that you've seen in in white then um is what we would typically see in the modern fire stations, meet best practices that Quinn was mentioning before um in regards to health, wealth, health and wellness and safety and training. Uh, so some of those spaces, the other kind of main entrance uh we touched on on the site plan is the fitness area that utilized not only for the fire department, but for other city staff as well, uh has its own separate entrance of that reason. Uh, as a part of that um fitness, we also have um tornado shelter to protect the fire department um as required by code. Some of the other spaces through here, which um I should say anything kind of on this left side is our cold zone of some warm transitional spaces in between. And everything to the right of that is our our hot um red zone. Um, but in those transitional spaces, we have our common areas, chemical electrical, our vertical circulation, some storage spaces, well as firefighter work criminal offices, firefighters on staff. To the right of that, we have um our seven apparatus space. So we have a grouping of four, our center of support area, which consists of um our decon in support areas. Uh, and then the last three bays. So with those seven bays that accounts um for, allows the department to fit all the apparatus, including decon space. Um, specifically allotted for that and room for um future ambulance. In that center support space is where we have our our decon, um some some storage, some workspaces. Uh, it also includes our turnout gear, which is part of that future um focused uh area that we've talked about multifunctional. It's sized right now for the current operations, which is that kind of mixed service model, but knowing that eventually when we fully go to full time, we don't need as many lockers. And so we already have set this up and planned for ways to turn this kind of top portion of that turnout gear room into storage, potential chemical de detox in the heater, um again on that health and wellness side. Then um the comp is the hose and training tower. Uh, this allows firefighters to run short duration training exercises within a space that is needed, which is the the hose drying. Um, and that allows them to run those those short duration exercises that Quinn had mentioned, you know, day to day in between halls without impacting on their response times. Moving to the second floor. So on the left side, you're seeing the residence, which have been uh color coded purple in the in the study diagram we looked at. Uh, the residence area is situated situated so that the dorm suites kind of ring the perimeter, keeping them all as close as possible um to kind of the central area and responding. So we have our suites laid out on on each side in the corner, not the wellness room, allowing firefighters to uh support mental health. So it's a space that they can go that is quiet. Uh, they can also um do stretching, meditation in that space, focusing on the mental health side of things. And in our center area here, we have our kitchen, dining and dayroom areas. Um, so this also, you know, is there to support imagery as well as relaxation for mental health.
Considers to the.
Common question.
People are more than one. That's kind of a question. They're gonna have like four.
We are planning for a couple. So one more for on that relaxation side. And then there's typically another one kind of in the day made dining area that can, you know, show their cat screens, that stationary things of that, but they can kind of multi perfect them there. Um, all these spaces are are organized, uh you know, centrally around that communal area, allowing um quick response times to our two stairs, one here and one here, as well as a fire pole. So all uh circulation moves in this direction very easily to those three options to get them down into the apparatus space. Uh, as I kind of touched on before, those suites are designed in such a way so that we not only, um, you know, and the walls right around them of the branding and sound separation for mental health, allowing firefighters um get better sleep and not have interrupted sleep, but it's also uh away from with a space and circulation separating from kind of those noisier areas of the day room, watching movies on on those large TVs.
Dream like.
Yeah, dream. Um, and then throughout that kind of residence area, we will have low level lighting as well to help with startle response as they get woken up in the middle of the night and have to respond to calls. Uh, they're not coming out of their dorm rooms and seeing very bright lighting might like in the seat. So. Then the other side, the mezzanine area. So that was a training tower goes up a few stories uh so that it height we need for to dry and deposit. Um, and then we provided a a mezzanine area for training because we already have these spaces down below with the very low cost item for us. Um, so you just put a floor in and provide um usable space up here. So there's some storage spaces as well as um some small areas for training again for those short duration exercises that they can do in clean halls. Moving to the exterior. Starting up top, uh we are planning for um in in the entire building, not just the exterior materials, but throughout a very durable building. Uh, our goal is that, you know, a building that'll last forty to fifty years. Not every single piece will last that long. You'll replace joint ceilings and things like that over time, but um the major um uh factors of the building will last. So what you're seeing here is uh that north um perspective off of Dodd, we have our main entrance right here. We're using a a mixture of materials starting out uh with the kind of smallest pattern you're seeing on there is a a brick material. They go up to kind of our our mid-range materials in here. These are composite wall panel system. And then our larger scale scenery that you're seeing on the pilot service. So you can see the main entrance off to the right is the apparatus space displayed as part of the lobby. Off to the left is one of the conference rooms on the public side of things. Uh, then the far right is the admin wings with the offices over there. And then you're starting to see that second floor. So these are the the dorm suites uh on the sides and then that wellness room on the corner with control windows that we can bring in a lot of natural light. Again, it's very good, that that must help. As we turn the corner, kind of walk along Brandy again, uh you see the front of that apparatus display, then using that mixture of materials. Uh, we're bringing in a historic nod uh to fire stations with having some arches over the apparatus day and display spaces where all the apparatus parts. Start to see that here. Uh, again, this is the admin wing with that separate entrance. Second floor residence is up above. And as we move right, we have our apparatus space. First moving of base again with that arch on the storage side. And um kind of our front tower space that has some of our workspaces and stair. Getting rain so naturally into some of those workspaces. It's kind of the same view from the southwest perspective. So you can see the apparatus space a little bit better. Into um second floor and admin areas as well as that south side of that space. Providing some signage there, but um one seventy-nine, some signage from Brandy as well as the signage on the front. Last two images, just so it's going to kind of walk around the backside, on the east side of the station is where you're seeing beginning in the northeast corner of the site on that top image. Uh, so you can see the hose and training tower on the backside. Fitness area, with its separate entrance. Classroom view is through those windows there. You can see the second floor residence up above. Back to our main entrance. Lot of images from the southeast, just giving you a little better view of the apparatus space, that training tower that allows multiple different scenarios uh for them on those short-term exercises as well as that self portion. And fitness. Again, with um some good sized glass in there to help bring in some natural daylight. Yeah, I started looking at the colors. Yeah, that's kind of next on our list, which is why you're seeing them in black and white, but we've talked about um warmth, um bringing warmth into the materials, both inside and outside.
Question, do I need to add?
I do have a couple of questions. So is what from a, you know, from the fire department standpoint, what what's kind of envisioning the public space area? Do we really need to? I'm just like, because I'm, I I bring that up to say, you know, we're we're trying to, trying to get us to this, you know, smaller number from where we're originally. I understand all the need that we have, but I'm just because in my mind, we're having some classroom space at the first center, right, for public use. And so it's like just give me some background on that. Is it specifically just open to whatever? Or is it more of a fire department need or kind of what's the concept on that?
Some of the needs or requests that we get is kind of the youth group. So boy scouts, cub scouts, uh, we used to host um snow trackers for their youth education, which we used to do at station one. We can no longer do that with staff underneath them as far as, because it's an evening class. Those kind of those functions. Uh, I'll say the classroom uh piece is that, but is also for us when we're going to hold a department meeting or we're bringing outside training. Inside training, we have that piece that's there along with that. It was kind of a multi, again, that multi-function. It's not just public, but it's also fire department. So we're doing our monthly training. So next month, as example, when Alina comes in, helps to do EMS training with us, this is this is a space that we do it in. Right now, we do it upstairs at station one. So.
There's also an E O C aspect to it as well that's being planned for. If this is a possibility with E O C. I I would be, yes, so you'll have to help me out here. Are you planning, are you thinking of using this for all the stations to do their training?
So stations will do individuals there, but when we do, so our medical training, we have to do at one fixed site. So Alina comes in, they bring in their equipment and we do that at station one today. So each station has their Monday night and we we don't have a training room currently in our system to do that other than station one. And again, we're we're fitting in what works today upstairs at station one. So this just offers us a better place to do that. And I'll say down the future, we can look at and say what's needed at station one and three, and we look at remodeling, rebuilding those stations.
So is I confusing myself? There's not four thousand square feet of second floor training in this one? I'm just, I'm conflating the first project?
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, all the training is on the first level on this.
The the public space and then dealing at the mezzanine, the second floor in that mezzanine, that center column.
Yep.
It's just open space.
Okay, because I, okay, so but on the first design, we looked at, there was some second level training for others.
There is at first centers, the one.
No, no, I'm sorry, the first. The study one mission.
Twenty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The twenty-three one.
It's similar on both. We typically in a modern fire station would always plan some mezzanine mobile um training. And a lot of that is because it's, the apparatus space are very tall. And we have rooms uh in between it. So on the first floor, all those support spaces don't need that height. So at a very simple cost, you can add in a floor, provide some openings in the wall that allows them to do some training while they're at the station and they can just leave everything out when they get a call, respond. And then, you know, come back and pick up where they left off.
Yeah, I just want to make sure not to be confused because my thought process is, okay, if there is four thousand square feet of training, maybe we don't necessarily need the public access part of it. Do we need both? So I'm just trying to think through if we're like trying to streamline a little bit. Let's think about that. My other question, and we're talking about future ambulance during renovate, during this phase. I do want to have a conversation about this. I don't know where we are. But my thought process i- is there potential to streamline the amount of bays on this project, knowing that we're going to have to renovate others? And we would potentially have ambulance at those, if that makes sense.
Yep.
So can we have this conversation three years from now at station three renovation instead of? Station Three renovation instead of, I think we save a little bit on on this project by eliminating the bay, or maybe we can't, I'm just from a size standpoint.
I'll say, uh, Brooke and they reached out to me saying, what equipment's going in here? So then I did the exercise of what are, you know, because obviously we're making two stations into one. And looked at our fleet that we currently have. And then I drew that even further and said, well, if we we use this station kind of as a the pinpoint, what can we look at Stations One and Three in the future and say, can we reduce bay sizes or bays down in those stations? Uh, from that analysis and accounting for whether we have an ambulance or two ambulances at each of those three stations, it gives us that space. So in other words, what I'm saying is if we we designed this to kind of where we are today, obviously there's some, there's potential of what we can reduce. But from an ambulance and equipment, uh, we can look at Station One and Three in the future and reduce bays down, which uh, we kind of put together and I think I shrunk each station down by at least a bay.
So yeah, we're we're both talking about the same footprint. It's just I'm talking about saving it today versus saving it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's there's an unknown right now.
Right.
About ambulance service.
Yeah.
Will it continue to be Alf or will it be something different where we're responsible for it in the future?
Well, I still think, and and the reason I bring it up is I have my own concerns about Alf and I've said it to Alina directly. But there's continued conversation in the legislature about how all that reimbursement looks. And I think obviously our desire would be different if the reimbursements budget, I would guess. Um, so.
So that's a difficult thing that
I get it.
we're trying to figure out is but do we do we build this for a future that may or may not happen? Or is there other opportunities out there with the other stations where maybe Alina or Alf uh, release those to them in the future? So.
Well, so yeah, my question is, if you took off space for future ambulance, are we talking about saving a million dollars? Are we talking about saving five hundred thousand dollars? Like, I just, I didn't understand your your string of the whole footprint. I'm just this is a lot bigger than that than we were talking about originally. So I'm like, how can we, if there's maybe some not essential services?
The one piece that you have to look at is right now, we house A L F or Alina at Station Two.
Yep.
So if we agree, if we go this route and we eliminate Station Two, we have to provide, we don't have to, but you know, in the best interest of keeping it an angle, we'd want a base space for them.
Because we also have them at three.
Correct.
And four.
Uh, they're not at four anymore. They're at one and three.
But they could.
But we have had discussions about four, about them, that being a more permanent spot.
How how often are they at our facilities versus hanging out at senior center buildings and that?
A great question.
Okay, please.
I have two of that.
Go ahead, you can do that. Yeah, sorry, John.
Um, just it, so the training tower um, and the training space, I we talked about the first center, we understand was is we did have some training facilities there for fires. So what how does this work with with what we're talking about at the first center? Is it duplicating? Is it um, a sort of difference?
The first center we designed, there is um, windows on the exterior for laddering. Uh, the second floor at the first center contains the S C D A maze or confidence course. And then there's also movable walls that are similar to the tactical room below it. So that's the features that are there, but it is a dry stairwell needing, we can't, we can't bring in wet hose and connect to a standpipe or any of that. So it's dry training. So we can work on bringing a dry hose up, but no water can be introduced into that stairwell. Uh, and then we look at that, the first center more of we're going to go down and do an exercise and we're going to be there for two, three hours, more of a long term. Like if we go to Able, we're there for four hours of training, if that makes sense. What the hose tower or what the training elements at this station is, uh, as they mentioned, is more hey, we want to throw ladders real quick. So if we got time that we're not on a call and this is what's on our training elements, we're going to do ladders for fifteen, twenty minutes. Uh, so we have that component and it's also a wet stairwell so that we can charge lines in there. Uh, for, you know, work on if we're doing, going into an apartment complex and flowing water.
One of the things we did change from the study to now because of our uh, now it wasn't happening at the first center and and we met with the design team on that as well. As we removed any of the confidence, the maze portions uh, that would have bothered with the some of the fire stations from that training at the level, where we just have the things that they can be quickly and drop. And then, you know, we're a little So so then something that would help me understand that a little bit better too. So we have our cadre of full-time firefighters.
Yep.
This is obviously designed uh, with the dorm space, everything, but is vision that all of our full-time firefighters are going to be at this station or will they still be at two different stations? Like during the course of a normal business.
They would be at well, you know, they'd be at one, three and four, walking with a long term. Currently, once the station's open operational, Station Four would probably become unmanned. We'd keep them here and at one with our current, if we're, if we're to open that tomorrow.
Right. So even if they're in one, if they want to trade, they would have to come here.
Correct.
Joshua.
Uh, two questions. Mine was, my initial question was, what changed or what was, it's five million dollars more for this version. So where do those costs come from?
Broaden the question that we've had about kind of gets the civics, where where do those five million dollars?
Some of it, one is the obvious, uh, extra, you know, additional bay. And then we're bringing up for that, there were six bays in the uh, study and about seven here. Uh, other than that, it's kind of spread around and we identified, you know, uh, just some of the growth, uh, it's, I I guess one of the ones would be like the uh, historic vehicle, we call that being in the original. Um, you know, that bits and pieces through that is where the other ones are are aggressive. Um, but I'd probably consider it to be already as well, or at least the biggest single pieces at apparatus name.
Now, I on some occasions, I think the historical truck should be at Station Four. Personally, when we're remodeling that one, I think if we're going to display it, it should be down there.
I agree.
Um, I don't know that it's not a huge thing. Um, I I struggle with this tower thing because if we needed a wet tower, I don't know why we need a first station. Uh, that seems like a first center, I think, first stage, not the first center. Uh, it just seems like a large structure that still changing from a dry one, that's why would we not?
You would still need the dry holes.
Where are we driving now?
On the floor in the base.
It's not, but we consider a, a, except for new standard and in process. If there's been standard fire station, the dry holes like this, but hang. So that's part of the reason for a tower either way, whether you, whether it's a wet tower or a dry tower, you still. Definitely, we we recommend a wet tower so you can practice some things that you can other locations.
So it's standard to have a tower for drying those as opposed to having thinking of a hose bracket, like, right, you know?
Yeah.
Next to the trucks. This is like a large structure.
The hoses are quite long.
Also marked.
And then they're drying a lot, many of them at one time. So when they come back from the fire, it's not just one hose, it's several. So it's the, it's your quantity. It's easier to manage um, in a, in a hour.
The other piece just from the cost side is that the study was twenty three, twenty twenty three, and we're at twenty twenty five. So we've got two years time between the twenty five million to where we are at thirty. So just.
So to be clear though, I think the initial study was twenty two, right?
For twenty.
So, huh?
Yeah, when you presented it in twenty three.
Our thoughts were around twenty five.
No, I mean, my years, twenty twenty two versus twenty twenty three. But when the cost were, it's um, that's the minimum. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, when we looked at this in twenty three, I thought the initial cost was twenty two. And I'm not
Oh, twenty.
And the reason I'm asking, saying that is because we put twenty six million into the franchise fee. So we did build in some, some, some manipulation there.
Um, ten to thirty million. How much is for contingency?
We would typically um, have, at this point, we would have five percent contingency during the design process. But there's, we're still thinking of how much.
Sorry.
And so when they're estimating, they're they're not they're guessing as if they want to have some work, that if it doesn't come out, it it goes away, that doesn't use. And then we would typically also have a five percent during construction uh, contingency in an all-new build, um, particularly um, in what that would actually be good soil, some of its location, um, I would say that that's more than enough. Uh, but that, so at the moment, we've got ten percent in there for providing contingency.
We have brought on R J M as a um, construction manager. They're, they're doing a good job. They're working with with the team here and they're identifying. They're verifying, you know, they're out in the field a lot. And so um, they're helping verify those as well.
Yeah, I just, is there I think we're ninety percent there. I would like to have a little further discussion about the ambulance thing. And try to see some numbers on today versus future renovation stuff. And then the, and then obviously conversation about the public area, if it's really new, if we do have and if I'm correct, that there's still other space for training upstairs. Equivalent square footage.
Are there a patient on that? Are you talking about the bottom of the
I I thought
The classroom area?
I'm, my, my inaccurate that I thought there was four thousand square feet of training in there, right? Did I? That's what I asked, and I thought.
Oh, the four thousand square feet was all the public areas.
Public, public area and training.
You know, bathrooms.
There was, there was one little line that said second floor training, four thousand square feet. Am I thinking of was that on the, the other one, not this one?
Right. This will say.
Right.
Mezzanine.
Yeah.
So that must be then the the design, go back, go to like slide.
You went to upstairs?
There. So what is that? That's the second floor training storage, forty one hundred square feet. What's that?
So we're got it. That'd be the footprint for this whole piece. So it's it's this, the training tower, the mezzanine and the storage, mechanical electrical, it's all the spaces up there.
And to some degree, because it was below it, you know, the critical function below it, the space upstairs. You know, we could leave it two-story space in some area or something, but if we're not.
No, I'm trying to say is if we, if we're not so concerned about the access for the public to be in a classroom, can that training be in, you know what I'm saying?
So it's, it's just the different styles of training that they're doing. So they do have times when they need like classroom setting, if I'm thinking. Now, oh my, you want to expand on that, but versus like in the mezzanine, it's they have their gear on, they're, they're, they're doing.
So as I'm trying to understand.
So the other, I guess maybe the piece that you want to that centerpiece, that mezzanine area.
Yep.
Is more of kind of the dirty zone again. Below it is where we're going to decon any gear, where there's contamination from a fire, EMS call. And then above it is just open space right now. There's nothing that we have programmed other than it's open space that we can do training and if we so need to.
Where the climbing window into.
Yep.
If nothing more than that, it's all.
Yeah, virtually. Yeah, I'm excited.
The green area, that classroom is more, we're sitting down, we're going through medical training with Alina.
So then apples to apples for them, the green area would be if we have enough square footage of the first center, I know it's not ideal, it's on site, but in theory, in the grand scheme of all of our facilities, we in theory would have that kind of class space at first, or no, or we.
But yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, if you look at this, um, and I by no means an architect, I promise, I won't activate, but you know, the inside, as they've started to schedule the operations, it gets harder to make changes, you know, the interior orientations of things, you know, because you when you start to take one thing away, it really impacts. So you really kind of have to start to look at the edges a little bit. Um, could you zoom out a little bit? You know, and as, as we've talked about this or I've talked about it as I came in, Alan goes to all these meetings for me. You know, as you look around the edges, you have the the truck display or the historic fire engine display there. Um, you have that conference room to the up there. Um, and then if you go even further up, you have a pretty large fitness area. Um, you know, so you could start to trim down the edges, you know, by making some changes there. Um, you know, once you get on the inside of things, it starts to get a little bit harder to to make any substantial changes. But, but you're right, Mayor, I mean, there's a lot of classroom slash conference space in this plan that I think if we are looking for areas to to make some savings, that could be some possibilities.
Yeah, I don't want to impact the fitness area.
That's a big fitness area.
Yeah, I get it. Um.
And and I want it to be nice too.
But I don't, I mean, does the vision still have like, you know, the public safety foundation of all the equipment for station four, or is the vision to keep that there and that this is a secondary fitness or?
I'll say some of the preliminary or just brief conversations that we had is some of that equipment that's currently at four can move to here and then we would add, and then that's a discussion we'd have to have with the foundation.
Yeah.
As far as supporting that.
Okay. Well, they've expressed it, because I was, I, I talked to Shannon, she expressed interest in how the foundation can play a key role into some of the origins.
Yep.
When we took tours of the different fire stations around the metro, majority of those fitness areas are like nine hundred to a thousand square feet. We've had this one at two thousand with the anticipation that other state staff may use this. Kind of done a little bit of internal looking and we don't think a lot of
Maybe outside of work.
staff will will use it. So I think it's an easy way to cut some costs. By reducing that workout. Yeah, I mean, we we talk about that, like, I'll give police an example. Right now, they have access to go over to fire station four and they rarely do it. It's just hard to get it's hard to get out of your own building to go do that. Um,
Is it realistic to cut one bay off or am I, my offense or?
I guess we can, we can certainly look at, and that was kind of where, when I looked at apparatus and what our fleet looks like today and in the future. Uh, I think it's easier to look down the road and say, can we shave space at the Stations One and Three versus here, we can kind of, we can have more space and accommodate for that versus we get to Station One and Three, we have to now add a bay because we, we shortened it here.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because we decided to to dedicate twenty years of franchise fees to make these projects happen. If we're getting down to the road five, six, seven years from now, our hands are going to be pretty tied. Unless we have tremendous growth in business and people paying into the franchise fee, our hands are going to be really tied in some of the renovations. Um, and so that's my one concern is if we think five, ten, fifteen years out, what's our pot of money going to look like? And I don't know if you guys the pro forma, I get it, I get inflation, all that kind of stuff. There's a ton of factors, but I just want to make sure we're not. Can this be raised a little bit so that we have a little bit on the back end?
Well, that's my question to the council. So um, we, we have twenty six million in the pro forma for franchise fees for this project. How comfortable are you, if you are comfortable at all, going over that, knowing that we will have, if you want to stay within that same budget, take stuff off of Stations One and Three renovations?
I mean, that is a part of the conversation.
So I think, you know, we need to hear, you know, and it can probably be a combination of both, you know, um, do you want us to try to shave cost off of this and preserve that option for the expansions on and renovations of one and three?
Well, in my.
Otherwise, we're kind of locking in.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, we don't need to get into this for the moment, but the problem is for me is I think our initial plan is a three, we're a little wide-eyed because that is a constraint site. Think about it. I mean, we'd have to really get creative on how we deal with the land or purchasing or flopping or whatever. So maybe that does make sense is to to fall through this plan and really take a hard look at what three is. Um, yeah, I don't know, maybe that's.
Yes, I mean, the, the way I look at it, we're, I mean, this is twenty percent more expensive than we were anticipating, twenty percent larger what we were planning to war. And we're saying we're going to put off the top stations till the next two projects. And that concerns me. I think we need to have um, I know there's some added features here and I want to have the best natural and all of that, but I, I do think we need to pick that, that part through. Um, if we go over here, we are going to have a lot of challenges in those future sites. And I know you, and and that's the more kind of T V D part of this whole process, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, when I think of spending priorities, I, I think I think we got it right a little bit on the front end with we want to support our firefighters, what the, the interior stuff, it's going to make them comfortable, keep them fit. I mean, I like a this and right off the bat, I'm going, we have one, two, three conference rooms. We can easily get rid of that one conference room and that, that uh, display bay. Um, in my mind, that just as, as a cost-cutting type thing, um, I I, I've been through public safety facility and construction. And what I learned there was. When you start compromising on the interior in terms of what you're using for materials, that's what it really starts to affect you. So I agree, I appreciate what Mr. Miller said in terms of, let's take a look at what we can trim on the outside. Uh, the big question is the ambulance bay and regardless of. You know, in the future, if things change and and we end up with our own ambulance or whatever, you still have an ambulance in town. And I think that's important. So I think. The best thing to do is, is to work and figure out where that's best stationed and how we can best accommodate that. Uh, if it's here, then then I think we get to pay for it, but if it isn't potentially a replacement. Um, I, uh. I think we have to look at that. And then the third thing is, is the training piece, I. When we went down this road, my understanding is, when we were talking about fire station the first time around, we go, well, we'll do a training facility out of. And I understand and I get where it's, oh, hey, you know, we can just take our gear and go do this. And I, I, I get that, but still, part of the, part of the crew has to come. To this position to train. So I think in my mind. Looking around the outsides, uh, I would say those are, are three areas where we can take a good, strong look. And the other reason I'm really curious to see about the exterior, I'll tell you what, and I'm playing Jake, I'm just, um. I, I don't think we need the most attractive, best department in the fire, uh, station in the metro. I think we need something that's functional for our taxpayers, that when their house is burning, we can get a fire department. I, that's the way I see, I see those types of things. So I think. Without seeing anything in terms of the exterior, I think that's the place that we can look at, but I think definitely a, a, uh. I think the carving around the outside or, to, to me, I see a meeting space that isn't. That we, I know this one's a breakout room for training, but. That's still a conference room, um. I think there's a couple of places where we could have trimmed.
Andrew, I want to add, on the, on the public space, I was very excited about that, especially when we were looking at Cherry View. Uh, at the park there, because that was kind of a benefit to the community and I thought that was going to be an important trade off. Well, this is. A different location, it's five million dollars of land. So I, I'm prob, I'm willing to compromise on the public area for this one, if it brings the costs down too.
Any thoughts? There's some feedback from us.
Yeah, so my, my, sorry.
No, I'm saying what's kind of your next steps are?
Yeah, so, um. We would like to get to a point where we can start to, um, you know, get to a final design. My. My plan on this was to bring this back to the council one more time sometime yet this fall. Um, with bringing in the comments that you have and hopefully. Um.
Is our intent still to break ground in spring or summer or?
Spring.
Spring, spring.
Yeah, so we designed it good over the winter. So, you know, we need to get moving.
Yeah.
We're, we're in a good, you know, in a good path here, um. But we'll come back to you yet this fall with the, hopefully, kind of our last and best proposal and see what you think.
Okay.
And have some better numbers.
All right, thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Sorry that we had to start you a little later than we wanted. Can tell the other developer about that. Moving on to items, um, for future discussion, anything? Okay, any committee or city administrative update?
Uh, I don't know, according to nine eleven. Or Matt, uh, last week, I think. Um, we, it was really three team, we approved our plan track. Um, with public safety.
Okay, with that, I will take a motion to adjourn. For a second?
Thank you.
Call the mayor and say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.